Recorded.
We always begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'd ask to remain standing for a moment of silence. And Joe, continue this for a pledge, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you, Vanessa. So we do have all three of us presently constitute quorum. We will have during our meeting two opportunities for public comment, one in just a few moments and then one before we adjourn. If you'd like to make a comment, we would remind everybody that we welcome your comments. If they are related to county government matters, if they are federal in nature, we recommend you talk to your federal legislators, same would be true on the state level. And then if it happened to be a local city, borough, township, school district matter, we'd suggest you talk to the appropriate officials at that level. But if it's a county matter, this is the right place to be. You're welcome to speak both times, beginning of the meeting, at the end of the meeting, or if you just wish to speak once, or if you're just here to listen. That's all equally fine. And then we would ask you try to limit your time to about five minutes. We appreciate that courtesy. Next on the agenda, we always put aside the time for any of our role officers. If they need to talk with us this morning, none of them are here. They're not obligated to be here, but we always give them that courtesy as well. For public comment, if you do have a comment, we'll recognize you and if you can state your name for the record, and I will hear what you have to say. Are there any public comments at this time? Mrs. Holland, good morning.
Good morning. Carrie Baldwin will need to help you. So this is actually a printout off of the county website. It is the election results for the Lawrence County Republican Committee. I have altered it slightly in that I highlighted some names in red. And in the column on the far right, which was already there, I just capitalized on it and marked up the number of write-in votes these individuals received. When we were here, I was here last week. You suggested that I talk to Tim Germani about issues that I have had in obtaining a complete list of write-in votes. And even last Tuesday, it took several tries for me to finally get a complete list. But I have spent a great deal of time examining it. The individuals who are not in red are not elected officials for the committee. The state law requires that they have at least 10 votes, write-in votes. Well, they printed out the code, but it is in the code. That if you certify an election, you certify the write-ins, they must meet the minimum, the same number of signatures that you would have to have on a petition to be on the ballot, you also have to meet that same write-in requirement that is across the state. So we have 49 individuals that you have certified are members of our committee. And this affects the committee greatly. It dilutes the vote of the people who were legitimately elected to the seats to represent the party. We tried numerous times to speak with Tim Germani about Joan Conte being listed on the wrong precinct. And it is also, and I do know that one, it is like a review, in the code, it is the duty of the elections director and the board of elections that no nomination petition, nomination papers, or certificate shall be permitted to be filed if it contains material errors, material errors, or defects apparent on the face thereof or on the face of the appended accompanying affidavits. So Joan Conte's petition, as I said, correctly listed Newcastle 2-3 as her precinct, and she inadvertently put 2-2 on the back. And Mr. Germani was adamant that she made an error. He put her on that because she made the error. But ultimately, it is still his duty to make sure that the right people in that cause Joan receive them here. She had to drop her petition. We brought it to the attention of the office and the office chose not to do it. This error and stonewalling, honestly, for us just to try to get this record, the write-in record, complete report so that we could verify the signatures, took at least to get, almost a month to get. And because we were not able to verify our committee members, we were delayed in sending out a notice. As I mentioned last week, we have to send out a notice within 30 days of the certification of the election to hold a meeting for our Republican Party. And immediately, Aaron Bernstein and Marlon Brown went directly to the GOP and are trying to take over our meeting now. I don't think they have any lawful authority to do so. But this error in the office has caused significant issues to our party in Lawrence County. And you certified an election that resulted in that.
Thank you for providing us with this document and thank you for your comments, Mrs. Holland. Are there other public comments at this time?
I just want to raise the comment.
Could you state your name for the record?
Lynn Ryan.
Thank you.
So I just, I got here late, so I don't know if Carrie brought this up, but the write-ins, the state law is that you, the state law, and it even lists, right, their local political parties in the law must attain at least as many write-ins or exceed, you must attain or exceed the number of write-ins that it takes or signatures that it takes to be on a petition. And we have 49 people that got sent in. Tim wasn't in and I, you know, you and the fact that I don't know if they all got certificates, but I'm still getting calls, people are confused, you know, are they on the committee, are they not on the committee? So 49 people were put on our committee that didn't have 10 signatures. So there's so much confusion. And isn't it ironic that that didn't happen last year when the Democrats ran in their precincts? I don't know. You ran last year.
Two years ago. We will, assuming my colleagues agree, we will not only mention this to Mr. Germani, but we'll be certain that our solicitor is made aware of this as well.
I just want to run, you know, I don't want to do this again. I don't want to be the chair anymore. But I want it to be the rightful people have the vote at a reorganization meeting that I couldn't even schedule because we didn't know who was on the committee and who legally should be on the committee and who legally should not. I mean, I want everybody to join in and help on the Republican Committee. But for the vote, it has to be the people who legitimately ran and, you know, got a petition and then Joan's case, you know, made a mistake. And I mean, for God's sakes, the woman's been on the committee for decades. You know, she's been involved for decades, so whatever. Yeah, that's my only comment is it's very frustrating that this has happened.
Mr. Kennedy, any response? Thank you, Mr. Semata.
No, I just think the solicitor should look at this as well and should follow whatever the state laws.
Thank you. Can we fix things? I mean, are we going to be able to fix anything? I don't think so.
Well, again, we'll bring it to his attention and, as we always do, follow his legal advice. Thank you both. Any other public comments at this time? Thank you. Again, before we adjourn, we'll find another opportunity for public comment. Moving along, under fiscal and contractual, we have one warrant registered that has been provided to us by the Comptroller's Office. It is dated June 30th of this year. And I'll give Dan and Chris time to look it over. Unless you have any questions, we could take a motion to accept this document. We'll accept it.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any concerns? If not, we'll take a roll call, please. Yes?
Motion carries.
Thank you. The minutes of the July 1 meeting are in our packet. Once you're ready, we can take a motion to adopt the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion. Thank you, gentlemen. We can take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Semata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Boglum?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under written communications, we have one document that has come in. We received it on July 2, it was dated July 1. It comes from Heidelberg Materials out of Connelsville, Pennsylvania. It is a blast notification noting that Heidelberg Materials will be conducting surface blasting in compliance with all applicable state and federal laws. The blasting will occur on the Midland large non-cold surface mine in North Beaver Township located approximately one mile northeast of the borough of Bessemer, west of the intersection of Hoffnaster Road and Smalls Ferry Road on the McCord Farm Trust LLC and Heidelberg Materials Northeast LLC. And then it goes on to indicate when the blasting will occur. Would one of you gentlemen care to make a motion to have us accept this correspondence?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns? If not, we'll take a roll call to accept it.
Commissioner Semata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Boglum?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Under Commissioner Reports and Comments, I believe I did to go first today. I know my colleagues over the weekend. Let them talk about that. Looking ahead, later today, the West Central Job Partnership Governing Board, which consists of the three of us and the three Mercer County Commissioners, will hold our quarterly meeting open to the public at 1:30 this afternoon here in this room. Also, the Lawrence County Planning Commission will hold their monthly meeting at noon tomorrow in this room. It was originally scheduled to be held out at the North Beaver Township Municipal Building. They're undergoing some renovations right now, so the planning meeting has to move to this room. That's open to public. Let's see. Mr. Semata, you're next on the list.
Yeah, Chairman, I think we actually had a very busy, it was a very busy weekend throughout the county. I had an opportunity to stop by Wilmington on the Thursday. They have their annual fireworks, Elwood City Band concert. The place was still, we finally had a beautiful night with nice weather. So I got a chance to see that. And you had the Back to the 50s return to Lawrence County after a few years' absence. And the family of Mr. Tris and Mr. Barto and many volunteers. I think it was a successful event to bring that back. I was happy to see that. Also had an opportunity to stop down in Elwood City for a few days at their annual, I think the 43rd Annual Craft Festival. And same thing, it was hot, but people turned up, played at both venues over the course of the three days. And it was good for Lawrence County, it was good for tourism. A lot of people came from outside the county and some from outside the state. And we're happy to, I've seen that, you know, for all the early things that I've seen. That they, all the events were successful. And let's hope that Back to the 50s will return next year. Elwood City will have their 44th. And Westminster, you must really get a lot of credit out there. That's your home air turf there again. It was just great to see that many people at night. Beautiful venue, Westminster College with the light and music and everything. So it's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, Chris. Dan?
I don't know much. I was at Wilmington Wednesday, Thursday night. The family was all in, so I just stayed around Wilmington all weekend. I didn't get to get the water off of that too far. Too hot for me anyway, so.
It was hot. Gentlemen, thank you both and thank you for representing us at the various community events that take place. We'll move on to new business and I think I saw Vanessa Lovely come in. Vanessa, if you'd like to come forward, please. It's nice to have you here. You've been out in the sun.
Yes.
You look very healthy.
Oh, thank you.
And what's our number on this first resolution?
152.
Resolution 152. And Vanessa is with the Lawrence County Social Services Organization. And you're here today to discuss the Medical Assistance Transportation Program. I'll turn it over to you for that purpose.
Thank you. So back in spring, April of 2025, Lawrence County Social Services, you know, on behalf, in conjunction with the county, submitted our annual application for the Medical Assistance Transportation Program to the PA Department of Human Services. And all that was in delay at the state level. Conversations with DHS says we should feel comfortable, you know, business as usual in July 1st in providing the program. So I'm here today to ask for your consideration to consider partnering with Lawrence County Social Services for us to operate this program on behalf of the county. The, from a funding perspective, all money that goes into this program is come, sent from DHS to the county. And at the end of the month, Lawrence County Social Services bills the county based on services provided, number of trips. And then we do quarterly reports, end of the year reports on behalf of the county for the program. And our application amount for '25, '26 is just a little over $2 million. But of course, if we don't provide that level of services, then that money doesn't.
Let me see if Commissioner Kennedy has any questions. No, sir. Mr. Semata? Okay. Which I assume means that one of you would be willing to make a motion to move forward with this resolution.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion. Thank you. There are no other questions or comments? We'll ask Vanessa Bayless to call a roll.
Commissioner Semata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Boglum?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now Vanessa, I'm told that this next item, it's listed under CYS, but I don't know how you're going to handle this.
She's got to do that.
Talk about this one as well?
Yeah.
Okay, this is number 153. This involves the Allied Organized Transportation Services, Inc. And I'll let you fill us in on this one if you could, please.
So in the last several years, CYS, or the county through CYS, has partnered with ACTS to purchase trips for children in foster placement who need to get to court ordered visitation or even to school when CYS first has to remove a child from the home during the school year. You know, of course, it's upheaval for that child. So the goal is really to keep that child in their homeschool district while kind of the court situation and more permanent placement is found. And ACTS has been doing that on behalf of CYS now for a couple of years. I make it a little more vague. It's the exact same fee structure, it's the exact same contract. But I did make it a little more vague in saying county agency. Reason being, and no one has any obligation to purchase trips off the backs at all. But occasionally during the course of the last couple of years, I've talked with different county offices or departments who said, well, you know, if we wanted to purchase a trip for so-and-so. And so my thought was, and if I missed the mark, my apologies, was to make it more general. That way I wouldn't have to come back in two months if, you know, somebody else. Occasionally, MHDS will need us for something. So that's more what I'm talking about, you know.
Your explanation certainly makes sense to me. Mr. Our director, Mr. Baldwin from MHDS is with us.
Sorry, just got into.
Any concerns?
No, she actually reached out and this makes perfect sense, so we appreciate them being available.
No problem with you, Republicans. Let me see if Mr. Semata has any questions on this.
No, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Kennedy, all righty. It's all in accord. Anything else you wish to add?
I would like to, and I'm embarrassed that I didn't notice Scott behind me when I walked in. I was talking with Mike.
Of course, it's different.
We each dance.
It's all distance.
But I did add in here, CYS, let me back up a moment. Through the CDBG funding, there was some, a project submitted to help offset some of the costs to CYS directly for some of the foster transport. So I did add a paragraph in this contract that says, if alternate funding is available, we will always use that first before we would bill CYS or MHDS or, you know, any other county entity that may wish to use us. And that's of course, I'm not, but just that last note.
Now since you brought up Community Development Block Grant, and you may not know the answer to this, don't feel bad if you don't, but is this something to your knowledge that Amy McKinney would be aware of?
Of course, yes, 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 yes. I've been, I've talked with Amy.
Great. That's great. She, of course, oversees, she and her office, as many of you know, oversee the, oversees the CDBG program. Now with that additional information, does that create any questions from you? Okay, Chris?
No.
Okay. Anything else? Ready for us to move forward? Okay, this is Resolution 153. And once again, the gentleman from the two departments seem to be in accord with it. So may I have a motion for Resolution 153? I'll make the motion and I'll second. Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no other concerns or questions, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Semata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Boglum?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Well, it's great to have you here. And as we say to everybody, if you have to head back to work, we understand that you're also welcome to sit.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Well, let's see. Mike Dripo is with us, of course, from CYS. And it looks like, Mike, you have four proposals this morning. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
And then as we sometimes do, I'll see if Dan and Chris are okay with Mike discussing the four. And if you're both comfortable, we could take a motion to do all four, but we can also split them out if we. Okay, thank you. So we'll start with number, and as you always do, Mike, you gave us this helpful document. The first Resolution 154, these are all renewals, Card, Inc., based in Pittsburgh, Allegheny County. Mike, what can you tell us about this one?
That's our security person. He does a great job. He walks around the outside, covers all the floors, making sure, you know, every hour on the hour. So they've been with us for a few years now. And it's under 3% increase.
Does he make sure that you behave?
Well, that's one thing that I try to hide when it comes around.
I'll ask Mr. Kennedy if he has any questions on this first one.
None at all.
Chris? Okay, so we'll move forward on that one for now, possibly take it with the other ones. Number 155 is a renewal. I want to pronounce it Albert Lee. Albert Lee, based in McKeesport, Allegheny County. And we've seen this one before, but can you remind us as to what they provide?
They're a foster care provider. No increase from last year. Now, we haven't had a child since. In case we get stuck with a child in the office at midnight. So currently, there's none. We haven't used them in a while, but there's no increase in their rate from last year.
Mr. Semata, any questions for Mike?
No.
Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Okay, thank you. Number 156 would be Bethesda Lutheran Services based up in Meadville in Crawford County. Can you give us some background on this one?
Yeah, they provide group home and foster care. The group home range is range range from about $160 to $530. Their foster care rate is around $68. They're under 3% increase from last year. We had, two years ago, we had two children. Last year, we had two, but currently, we don't have any, in that facility right now.
Thank you on that one, Mike. Dan, any questions?
No.
Chris?
No.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Number 157. Bring us closer to home. This would be a contract with Cray Youth and Family Services. And that, of course, had a quarter here in the city of Newcastle. So, Mike, you want to give us some information?
This is their foster care program. Zero percent increase from last year. And we've had, you know, like two years ago, we've had 18 children, 14 last year. We have six now currently. But they're provided, been with us for a long time. And like I said, no increase from last year.
Thank you. Thank you. Chris, questions?
No.
Dan, anything?
No.
Well, we've heard the proposals from Mr. Dripo, which include Resolutions 154 up through and including 157. If the board is so inclined, would one of you wish to make a motion to approve all four of these?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. Thank you, gentlemen. And then are there any final questions for Mike to offer this year? If not, we'll have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Semata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Boglum?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Well, Mike, appreciate your experience. Stay safe. Take care, Mike. We have three proposals this morning from Mental Health and, are you okay? Mental Health and Development Services. Scott Baldwin is the director of that department. And he and his staff certainly do great work over there. And like we did with Mike, if you gentlemen don't mind, we'll walk through all three and perhaps move on all three with one motion, or we can split it out if we have to. Scott, the first one I see here is Resilience Support, based here in the city of Newcastle. Can you tell us about this one?
Sure. So this is the start of our new fiscal year contracts. So we'll be here quite a bit moving forward. So for Achieve, this is paid out of the Human Services Block Grant, which we're waiting to get passed sooner than later. And all our contracts, our providers know that they don't get paid till we get our funds. But this contract will start July 1, 2025, and run through to June 3, get '26. Again, paid out of Human Services Block Grant, which is no county dollars. This is a renewal contract. And Achieve is a provider that does psychiatric rehabilitation. These are groups that are run up at the old West Side Elementary School with the Care Center. These are those who normally would stay home and sort of isolate, but this program encourages folks to come together. So it's a site base, but it's also a mobile program. It's a small amount, it's only $25,000, but it's a great program and we appreciate it on that service.
Scott, thank you. And I'll see if Mr. Kennedy has any questions. Thank you, Mr. Semata. All righty. That takes us to number 159, which is another organization based here in Lawrence County, Northview Estates Limited Partnership. Scott, can you give us background on this?
So same thing again, this is a fiscal year. So same thing again, this is a, uh, fiscal year Human Services Block Grant contract, starting July 1st, 2025, running through to June 30th, 2026. Their cost to the county. This is a personal care home. We're very fortunate to have several in Lawrence County that partner with us to accept our referrals. Across Western PA, we've seen a lot of personal care homes close. So we're very, we value Northview a lot. Um, we have several people that live there, and so this contract is for $65,000, and it's just to support our folks that are living there. They're appreciative of, of their relationship with us.
Thank you, your, your information is very helpful. Uh, Chris, question? No, Dan? Okay, thank you. By the way, Scott, I'm assuming that, and you may have said it, so forgive me, but these are all renewals. Is that, these are all renewals?
Yes, sir.
And then, uh, finally, number 160, and once again, we're staying within the county boundaries. This would be a contract with the Human Services Center, which is based here in the city of Newcastle.
And then, again, a renewal contract, paid out of Human Services Block Grant funding, no cost to the county. This runs from July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2026. And, uh, I'm sure you're all familiar with Human Services Center. They've been, uh, the county's, uh, base service unit clinic for many years. Very, very appreciative of all the work they do. These funds cover folks' housing supports, uh, case management, their medications, their counseling, in addition to other things that they do, suicide prevention. This is a list of, of services that are vital to folks' recovery. Um, and this is a, really an ongoing contract with them every year. So the total amount is, is large, but we ask a lot of Human Services Center. So the, the total dollar amount's $3,754,600. That's actually a slight decrease from last year. Uh, some programs have seen decrease in, in activities, and we've shifted some dollars to other providers, but, uh, but that's the amount. They offer a lot, and they haven't gone any, any of the details that you have. But, but again, Human Services is, uh, sort of a staple for us.
Was it safe to say that of all the agencies, either the largest or one of the largest in terms of the dollar amounts?
It's, it's the biggest.
Okay, a big mark would be probably the second largest. For over 50 years, so we're, we're. Thank you for that. Uh, Dan, questions on this one?
No.
Uh, Chris?
No.
Okay, well, those are the three that, uh, Mr. Baldwin has for us this morning, and if my colleagues would wish, I could take a motion to approve, uh, Resolutions, uh, 158, 159, 160, all the things we might.
I'll make that.
Second the motion. Thank you, gentlemen. Any other concerns? You're in, done? Vanessa, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Scott, uh, thanks for coming over. Uh, will you be back next week, do you think?
I'd be back next week, but probably before.
Okay, that's great.
I'll get to Chris.
That's fine, no, you're always welcome to.
Take care.
Have a great, have a great day. We have, uh, two matters in front of us this morning for consideration from the jail. And Deputy Warden Spelmoel is with us, good morning, Loretta. Thank you for coming over. Uh, we'll do these separately, uh, if you don't mind, but, uh, since there are only two of them, and they both have different subject matters. Uh, the first one, uh, we're, we're certainly pleased to have this one come before us. This is Resolution 161. It will allow for the county to enter into an agreement with Bieber County for our county to house direct file interest of justice juvenile offenders. But I'll let you give us the details, if you'd like.
That's pretty much it. Uh, it's a general contract that we are entering into with as many counties as we can. Um, this is one that has been executed by Bieber, I think it's Bieber, a month or so ago, spoke with their prison board, and, um, they actually have a few, I don't know if you have a copy of it or not, but they have actually executed their individuals, their commissioners, at their meeting, I believe, um, early last week. And the information is here in the contract, it's, it's like I said, a general contract. We currently do not house any juveniles from Bieber County, but in the event that we could get them in the future, we would have the contract executed and be able to enter into that agreement with them. And so if it is, uh, something that we're willing to do, um, I could, um, have that sent to them once we have the resolution done, and we would have the contract in place.
Makes sense to me.
Okay.
Mr. Sanada?
No, it's, uh, it's something we want to do, and help to get them in more counties. It's that street life assistance, for, for potential juvenileous. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
I'm, I'm fine, thank you.
Yeah, likewise, thank you for your efforts on this one, and, uh, we'll note that the, uh, amount of pay, uh, if we were to accept one of, one or more. Would be, uh, $500 per day. Loretta, may, may I have a motion for?
I'll make that motion.
Approval 161, thank you, Chris, I'll second it. Thank you, Dan. If there are no other concerns, we'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then, uh, the next item, number 162, would, uh, have the county enter into an agreement, which would be a consultant contract agreement with, uh, Zerilla Consulting. And, uh, uh, this ties in with a number of grants that the county has been receiving specifically for the jail, but I'll let you talk about it in light.
Thank you. Uh, Lisa Zerilla, uh, has been running the grant program through our medical assisted treatment program and the outpatient services that we have at the jail. She recently put in her retirement, um, but because of the, um, the grants that we do have and the, the necessity of having somebody fill that position, and then also to not overwhelm them with all of the fiscal responsibility and the paperwork and the reporting to the state, um, we would like to enter an agreement with Lisa to continue to work with us through at least this grant period. The grant ends, the Pennsylvania Commission on Criminal Delinquency Grant ends at the end of December of this year, with the opportunity to extend it into next year. And then also, if there are more grants going to be made available, the program can continue to be funded through these grant services. Um, but it grant the proposals with prior approval. Uh, I'd be hopeful that that is something that, um, the board would consider doing to keep us moving forward in the right direction. We have an excellent program, um, highly, highly touted throughout the state that we offer the things that we do, and we're the only county job that does offer, um, some of the services that, that are here at, uh, Lawrence County.
And that's, that's, thank you for noting all of that.
Yes, yes.
And I was also glad, because you talked about future grants, and she would play a role in, in, uh, the application process for them, so that's great. I'll note that the, uh, contract would, uh, would state that, uh, the amount allocated towards this service would not exceed $4,800 annually. Uh, let me see if Commissioner Kennedy has any questions. No, sir. Mr. Sanada?
No.
Okay, thank, thank you. Uh, could I have a motion then? Anything else on this one?
Yes, sure.
Could I, could I have a motion for Resolution 162?
I'll make that.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Gentlemen, thank you both, and if there are no other concerns, we'll ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Loretta, thanks for bringing both of these to our attention.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your time and effort.
For team programming, yes, thank you, thank you.
As we say to everybody else, you're welcome to stay, but if you have to head back across the street, we understand. Thanks, uh, again, Loretta. Okay. Um, I am 12, this would be Proposed Resolution 163. And I'm going to turn this over, if he doesn't mind, to Mr. Vanasco, but if my colleagues wish to, uh, add comments, we'll certainly allow for that as well. But if you'd all object, I'm going to have Joe talk about this. Uh, this would, uh, authorize the commissioners to solicit, uh, a, an RFQ, request for proposal on qualifications from interested firms for an energy savings performance contracting project. Um, but I'll let, I know, Joe, you've worked on this, you're in the loop, but if you don't mind, could you give us some background?
Absolutely. Um, as you said, it's, it's a request for qualifications, and, and from a county's perspective, we would find a single point of contact, um, from a professional that can help with two major projects that we have around the courthouse. The first and, and most important is the roof project, roof project. Uh, our roof was put on, I believe the courthouse was 1978, so that's how old our court, our roof over the government center is right now. So we've been talking about it for some time. Um, and, and this would be a single point of contact for that. Also, um, in today's day and age, a, a big savings in energy, a second project would be looking at, at the same company, uh, being able to oversee a transition from regular lighting to LED lighting, to save, to save money for the cost savings. Uh, if I had to pick, the first of the two would certainly be the roof, and, um, and then look at, look at moving it into doing the lighting in the courthouse. Um, much like in architecture, we've had more firms that we've used in the past. Um, like I said, we just want to see somebody oversee these projects, uh, and help us out with them. I'm certainly not qualified to tell you what's the best shingle or, or most energy efficient thing, uh, to be done on a roof, so. Uh, initially, I thought it would probably fall under a professional service. However, as I've explored it, and the route we want to go is, uh, what's called a PISA project. And PISA stands for Guaranteed Energy Savings Act. Uh, PISA allows, allows for a lot of these projects to remain, uh, budget neutral first and foremost, uh, which is very important, uh, in our financial state of the county. Uh, basically, we can, we could, if we were entered into agreement, uh, through PISA, uh, this would allow us to actually pay the cost of projects via the energy savings. And that's the, that's one of the real benefits of, of looking towards PISA. Uh, PISA also allows us to, to really drive down the cost through expanded networks of, of people that could be applying to actually replace the, um, or, or the lighting projects. Um, so there's a competitive bidding process through PISA. Uh, and PISA also allows us to apply for, uh, different grants that we otherwise would not be allowed, um, to help with the cost factors as well.
Well, I want to begin, I want to thank you for all the work you've put into this, number one. I think we should thank Solicitor Manor, because I think he's offered some guidance.
Absolutely, yes.
Um, Chris and I can take about this much credit. This gentleman's focused on it, and I really appreciate the time and effort that, that you've, uh... Dan has far better mechanical understanding than, no disrespect, but we both admit it. Our knowledge of that is a little more limited, so Dan, thanks for your time and input. And this is the first of a number of steps that we're going to be taking that will ultimately lead to a new roof.
Absolutely, that, this is, this is really, um, in some, it'd be like step number one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, we would pick out of the applicants who apply, uh, the commissioners would pick the single point of, of contact or, or the lead on it. Um, from there, that's really where the, the competitive bidding comes in, and the bids that we've seen in the past. Um, the roof project will still be totally bid out as we always do, uh, more than likely on that bid with the, that, uh, controller, Prestifind uses now. Uh, but the first thing we'd use is to identify that person who's in, oversees.
Again, this is, the roof part of it is, is applicable only to this building. The old courthouse had a relatively new roof put on, maybe about 10 years ago or so.
I don't even know if it's been 10, maybe 7.
Yeah, Frank Carrier.
He would not, I still remember the morning I came in, and, and he had called me at 6:30 in the morning, and, and when I got here, he was standing right in the middle of the main roof up there. He said, "Come on up," I said, "Got it too."
Well, and, uh, uh, we have to thank, uh, the courts. Uh, obviously, they're on the third floor, and we've had some leaks, you would recall. We've had some leaks, given the age of the roof on this building. And, uh, some of the leaks have entered into the courtrooms, and our judges have been very understanding, and they've been very patient. And, I mean, we've, we've been made aware of a leak, we've addressed it right away. But again, our, our courts, we appreciate their, their patience. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kennedy, because again, you, you've played a role in this, and I'll see if you have any comments or questions.
The only comment, I got it, just get it done, because it will come. This is July already, and, uh, we were talking about this last year. Because of how slow government works, I'll say, um, it takes time to get this done, but Joe, thank you. I beat Joe up probably every day, uh, to keep things moving, but, uh, I'm getting used to the way government works, and sometimes you can't just go up there and put a roof on it. I'd like to, we're getting there, that's the main thing. And thank you, Joe. Uh, Joe and I kid around a lot about this, but we're getting there. That's the main thing.
Again, thank you for your efforts to, Dan, and your expertise. Mr. Sanada, questions or comments?
No, I just, heck, I want to have any comments, I think this is something we've talked about actually the past year and a half since we got here. And I know the lighting system, I know Mr. Kennedy, that was one of his first things, a little down. We walked around the building, used the lights to get them, uh, energy saving. I think we took a, a major step, uh, last year with our, uh, looking at cost energy costs. And, uh, that's paid off for the, uh, you know, this is step two. And, uh, Joe, thank you for your efforts, because this is something we've been talking about, this roof. And, uh, Dan, so we've got to get this done, especially before the winter. Uh, and it's something, it's one of those, a long-term investments, and I know we put money aside to try to cover this cost, and, uh, you know, we want to make sure it gets done. And, uh, like I said, I think that, if we need these energy efficient lights in there, it's going to really go a long way for future saving, saving life for the county. That's the most important, so, thanks, Joe, and, yeah, thank you for your efforts. I know when it comes to lights, that's one of the special things. I know you tried to change a few out there, but Joe said no.
Well, this is, uh, Proposed Resolution 163, noting that the county intends to use this, uh, request for, uh, proposal qualifications, qualify, select a firm that would conduct an investment-grade audit, award contracts to perform these facility improvements that we've discussed, including cost-effective energy conservation retrofits. Uh, three sealed paper quotes shall be submitted by July 22 of this year at 3:00 PM to the, uh, county controller, and one electronic copy shall be submitted to, uh, Mr. Prestifind, who is the county controller.
Dan, so legal ad will be in the paper tomorrow and next Wednesday.
You read my mind, that was my next question, you're way ahead of me as always, so thank you. There will be a forthcoming legal ad, so thank you. Any other concerns before, before I entertain a motion for this? May I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. Joe, anything else?
No, thank you.
Uh, Chris or Dan? Again, thanks, Vanessa, for noting when the legal ad will be.
You're welcome.
We'll take, uh, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution 164 is a transfer request that has come to us from the voter's office. The total request is $20,953.30. We're breaking this out as follows, it's all coming from the commissioner's contingency. $18,453.30 is going towards materials and supplies, and $2,500 is going toward, uh, travel and training, and these costs are applicable to, uh, the 2025 primary election. This is Resolution 164. Uh, Chris, any questions? No, Dan?
None.
Okay, may I have a motion for this resolution?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Thank you both, uh, gentlemen. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have three, uh, administrative transfers before us. I'll walk us through, stopping if you have questions. And then if you're willing, we can always take one motion to cover the three. The district attorney's office, this is more of a technical amendment, if you will. They're asking for a $10,000 transfer from their vehicle expense line item into the capital asset line item. This was just simply a deposit that had been made into the wrong line item. We're making that clarification and correction. And it's noted here that the controller is aware of this and has actually given the district attorney the correct account number as to where this money belongs. Dan or Chris, Chris, any questions? Jail is asking for an $8,000 transfer from their contingency into the gas line item. You may recall, this was actually, we had a similar request last week, and then I think the determination was made that it was not a sufficient amount, that my, your understanding is correct. And that leads us to have to do this a second time. Let me see if there are any questions from either Dan or Chris. Okay, once again, this is an $8,000 transfer from the jail's contingency into their gas bill line item, a $1,000 transfer from contracted provider care into court-related costs. And this is to cover expenses for locate, serve, as well as adoption reimbursable expenses. Those are the three transfer requests that we received. If there are no questions, I have, but yes, sir, go ahead, Dan.
Fifty-eight thousand dollars, is that the same number we did last?
Yes.
Yes.
So we have $16,000 in gas because of our boiler.
Yeah, it's our boiler, not a lot of tanks, just the heating here and stuff.
They just thought that's amazing, it's the average budget level. We've got that fixed.
Yes.
Yeah, when I saw this earlier, Dan, I actually went to Vanessa and said, "Hey, we just did this a week ago, is this perhaps an accidental repeat?" She contacted the administration of the jail, found out, no, they need this additional $10,000. Other concerns, gentlemen? Could I then have a motion to approve the three transfer? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Some announcements, the Board of Commissioners will once again meet a week from today, July 15, at 10:00 AM, in this room, open to the public. As we noted earlier, the Lawrence County Planning Commission will hold its monthly meeting tomorrow, July 9, at 12:00 noon, in this room. Beginning of the year, it was advertised that it would be held at the North Beaver Township Municipal Building. They've had to move in here because of renovation work that's going on at the township building. So, public meeting of the Planning Commission will be here tomorrow, 12:00. And the county prison board will meet one week from tomorrow, Wednesday, July 16, at 12:00 noon, also in this room, also open to the public. And speaking of the public, we have one person in the audience, I'll open it for any public comment. Thank you, Loretta. Closing comments from my fellow commissioners. Mr. Sinado?
No.
No? Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
I'll do it.
All righty, thank you, sir. Any concerns from either Joe or Vanessa? Okay, thank you both. There being no other business to be brought before the board, could I have an adjournment motion? I make that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, the same sign, motion carried. Turn off the computer. Thank you all. What did you need? We'll wait for, I don't know if you needed all of us or Joe. You did, okay. Just give us one second. Well, good morning, everybody, and welcome. We will convene a regular meeting of the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, July 1 of 2025. Appreciate everybody joining us and would ask if you have any type of an electronic communication device, if you'd please put it on silent or vibrate, we would appreciate that courtesy. We'll also note that the meeting is being live. We always begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'd ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence. Commissioner Sinado, did you read this in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation for all.
Please remain standing, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you all. Vanessa, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sinado?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Volker?
Here.
We have a forum. As we always, one will be in just a few moments, and then the other one will be prior to adjournment. We ask that your comments be related to county government matters. Also, if you could try to limit your time to about five minutes or so. You're welcome to speak at both times, both at the beginning and at the end. If you just wish to speak once, that's fine, or if you're just here to listen, that's also fine. Next on the agenda would be roll officer reports and comments. We always set aside time for any of our elected roll officers, if they wish to join us, we give them the opportunity to speak, but so far, we have none in the room. So that takes us to public comment, and if you do have a comment, we'll recognize you. If you could state your name for the record, hear what you have to say. Are there any public comments? Yes, Mrs. Vaughn, good morning.
Hi, did you get my email?
Last week, yes. Did you get my response?
I did not.
I responded to you, it was either, I think it was Thursday, maybe for York County, and I would be returning on Monday, and that Mr. Germaine was also out of town last week, and that we anticipated that you would hear back from him on Monday, which I hope you did yesterday. I hope you received the information that you had requested.
I did receive that information. We can talk about that in a minute. So one of the first questions I had, though, was why the Republican Committee was not notified of the certification of the election.
My understanding was, first of all, that the meeting was legally advertised in the legal ad section. Secondly, we've asked Mr. Germaine every time to contact the two-party chairs. He indicated to us that he had done so. In fact, Mr., Mr., I'm sorry?
Then did?
Yeah. Said if I had any questions. No, that if I had any questions.
But notified of the meeting or just the, of the?
No, not in the meeting, just at the meeting.
Well, my understanding was he made the effort to contact both chairs, in fact,
Well, we, nobody got a notification, but as we have to stay tuned before we don't get this, we get some news.
And I would remind you that that is a courtesy. We're not obligated by law to notify the party chairs. We do that as a courtesy, and from what I understand, he did make the effort.
Well, and it's a particular courtesy when our election falls in that particular primary election. So, the entire Republican Committee, the decision on that, we didn't get to weigh in until we found out later about the meeting. And even prior to the certification, before the election even, the office was notified that there was an issue with Joan Conti's petition. She was listed on Newcastle 2-2, and she's in 2-3. She is also now recorded as a winner in 2-2. According to your official results, she won a precinct that she doesn't live in.
My understanding is that's based upon the listing on the nominating petition that was submitted by her to the election office. That's what was stated on that nominating petition.
Right. So on the nominating petition, she incorrectly put 2-2 on the back. But I, she's been a committee member for a long time. I would think that the committee does, or the office does have to look at the front page to make the signatures are correct. So, you know, and this was a simple error that could have been corrected. We did, we became aware of it, and we, and Joan called the office, Lynn called, Lynn went into the office to talk to them about it. Tim was, you know, reiterated that she filled it out incorrectly. This is just a simple error that could have been corrected. She is... It's a simple... And so she was listed on the ballot in 2-2, and she won. And now she's listed as a committee member there for when she's not even supposed to be there. She's also aware that people wrote her in in the proper district. So when I had requested the report so that I could see all of the write-in names, none of the write-ins are listed for her precinct, none. So it's impossible for us to evaluate properly or certify, us to certify for the committee that there wasn't one person in that district that she didn't get a vote for.
Is the information that was emailed to you yesterday, does that information have her name to your knowledge?
Yeah.
I would, in fact, there, Tim just walking up the steps. I would suggest go back to him and bring that to his attention.
Well, I just did try to speak with him, but he's adamant that he couldn't do anything to fix this, which we disagree with. We think that these sorts of issues have been corrected at other times. But I have only evaluated the Republican Committee write-in names. We have to have a meeting within 30 days of the certification, which we're not going to be able to do timely until we look into this further. But when I went through those write-in names, it does not match what is listed on the county website. There are names of winners that you report as winners that I don't have write-in signatures for. There are names listed and vice versa. I mean, it's just a mess, to be honest. I can't make rhyme or reason out of it. In some precincts where you list a winner, you have names that I can't even read. They're either cropped off, majority, actually, of the names are cropped off. But for the most part, I can decipher who the write-in name is, but a lot of them are just cropped off. So you don't have a complete name, so that needs to be addressed. We need the complete signatures and all write-ins. In Joan's precinct, the report on the county website says that there were three write-ins. And as I said, there are no write-ins listed at all. They were put under as scattered, but there are no write-ins at all for Joan in her own precinct. So I can't see, I mean, who were the three people? We have no way of, and that's, hers is not the only precinct. I mean, it would take quite a while for me to go through the work I did on this yesterday with limited time. But there's definitely some errors. I mean, in some precincts, you had eight or 11 people as write-ins, but any of the names? And it just doesn't seem feasible that that many people would be written in, and they were all wrong? And if they were the wrong, sometimes you can see in the write-in report, a name had been listed.
Affiliation, someone wrote that name in, it's a matter of record.
Was on the list. But in other cases... So, we either, I mean, we need all the names. There's no reason, if I asked for the total report, I should have gotten, so here's Newcastle 1-2. There are seven votes recorded, five are scattered. I didn't get the list of all those three, or five scattered, they're not in that report that I got from Tim yesterday.
The one from yesterday. Did you, were you able to see the actual handwritten?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, those are the names that I said are, majority of them are cut off.
Okay.
Majority of them I could decipher, but there are some I could not at all. Or there's just a bubble in a line, I don't know if it's cut off, or they just all put it in, I mean, it's hard to tell.
Well, I would suggest, and I'm assuming since he went upstairs, he'll be coming back downstairs at some point, I would suggest that you meet with him, he'll be able to show you what they have in his office as it compares to that document that was emailed to you. And maybe the ones that have been cut off in part, he'll be able to show those to you in their full listing. That would be my suggestion.
Okay. Well, like, what's the policy to assign someone? Because there are people who got, well, she got five right, we know, we've talked to five people that wrote her in, and there's zero on here.
Well, I mean...
Or three that they're scattered, or...
That's why, again, I would suggest that you talk with Mr. Germaine, show him what he emailed to you to verify it's exactly what he has. If someone says they wrote a name in, they may just be saying that, and I'm not suggesting that that's the case, but someone can say, "Oh, yeah, I wrote you in," but maybe they didn't.
She wrote herself in.
Okay, so that if you wrote yourself in, there should be at least one.
And someone else. And someone else, so there should be two people on that.
And that's what I would zero in on with Mr. Germaine. They have the documents over there, and you'll be able to show them to him.
But, yeah, I was told that you had to have 10, but then it's like one. Yeah, you had to have 10 signatures, which you need 10 to get on the ballot, but to be on the committee, it's not, I mean, if you're running for sheriff and you're trying to win Democratic and you're a Republican, you need 100, because that's...
That's right.
But local elections, if you get one write-in, you're on. Judge elections.
I'm assuming that's true. He can verify that.
It's plurality, yeah.
He has the election code book, he would be able to refer to that. Come on, he's coming back down the step right down.
What is the policy of verification on here? I mean, is...
The policy is, we have to take them as they're submitted to us. Now, yes, if an error were to be noticed, yeah, we would make a good faith effort to make that person aware of it.
So the county doesn't actually check to make sure that that person is even in that precinct, or that they're a Republican committee person? I mean, so there's no verification at all?
I would assume that in some format there is, but I would ask that you ask that question of Mr. Germaine, so he can verify that for you.
And then, what, I mean, when does it get corrected, or how is it going to be corrected that she's listed on the wrong precinct?
Well, again, discuss that with Mr. Germaine, but as party chair, you do have the authority to make appointments when there are open positions. That might be the solution to this, to this issue, possibly.
Reorganization meeting. And I'm not doing this, yeah. You might examine it.
And even if you appointed her, she can't vote for, right, so six months?
Six months.
Are those the party bodies? Show him these documents, and he'll be able to work with you on that.
I think we'll do that.
Any other public comments? Thank you all very much. Once again, we'll have a second opportunity for public comment prior to adjournment. Moving on, under fiscal and contractual, we have caller's office, also known as check reconciliation.